All right, good evening, everybody. It is seven o'clock and we are on air. So I will call our regular city council of July 26 to order. In the first, oh, forgot to do that. And the first item is the pledge of allegiance. So if you can, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is the open forum. It is a chance for community members to come to our council meeting and share up to three minutes of information or opinions that they would like to share. It's not a time for open discussion. And then if there are questions, our staff follows up with the answers to those questions at the following meeting. So let's see here. The ways that you can participate are by submitting your comments via email Or before our meeting, you can call her at 612-861-9711 and either relay your message to Kelly or you can also leave a message and then that message will be read to council. Or if you would like to participate by calling in, you can dial 1-415-655-0001. And then the webinar access code is 2454-528-1902. And the password is 123. That is all listed in our notes, in our agendas of the council meeting. Or you can participate in person. So I just wanted to ask, is anyone here in person who would like to speak at the open forum? Okay, looks like we don't have anyone in person to speak at the open forum. And then I will just ask our city clerk, Sinning, if we do have any calls or messages or people on the line. All right, we don't have any messages, calls, or people on the line. So seeing, well, actually, I'll just wait for a little bit before I close it. So I'll wait a few minutes before I close it. Okay, and then I'll just ask one more time, has anyone called in? Nope, all right. Seeing as nobody here is in person for the open forum and we don't have any comments online or on the phone, I will close the open forum and move to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the special closed city council session of July 12, 2022, and the regular city council meeting of July 12, 2022.
Supple, so moved.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any council comments or questions on the minutes? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The minutes have been approved, thank you. The next item is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Troutman, second.
Thank you, there has been a motion made and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the agenda has been approved. The next item is our consent calendar, which is read by city manager Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved and no further council action on these items is necessary. We have a short consent calendar tonight. The first item is consider approval of the amended rental agreement between the city of Richfield and the Minnesota Whitecaps professional hockey, professional women's hockey team for use of a locker room, ice time for practices and games, concessions and alcohol sales. And also Director Markle told me that we have some players here and the coach from the Whitecaps, so maybe they can present briefly after I present the consent calendar. Item B, consider approval of the establishment of a recreation special revenue fund for the sustainability program that includes organized collection. And then finally, approval of the first reading of an ordinance amending the term of the existing franchise agreement from August 1, 2022 to January 31, 2023. And scheduled, I have to make a correction on this. We, there was some, we weren't sure if we needed a public hearing or not and we do need a public hearing and we didn't get the notice into the newspaper in time. So the second reading is actually going to be for that first meeting in September, which is September 13, 2022. And that's the consent calendar for tonight.
Great. Well, why don't, and before we go to the motions, why don't, does anyone from the hockey team want to come and just say hi and present? Or you not? If you want, you can come to the microphone, just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the hockey team.
I'm Bobby Long. I work with NLTD Hockey Ventures LLC. We're ownership group of two professional women's hockey teams that play in the PHF, Minnesota Whitecaps, and then also the Buffalo Buttes in Buffalo, New York. Our main focus this year was to get Minnesota Whitecaps their own locker room, their own space, so they can call that rink their home. I've been working with Chris for the past several months to try to set it all up, make it right and, you know, give the young ladies, we have two players here. We got Sidney Moran and Rania, Rania Morgen, who have, you know, signed contracts with the Minnesota Whitecaps. And the main focus is to make it a home for them, a place they can go play their home games, have their own locker room, the facility, and, you know, something where, you know, they're treated like professional athletes.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you so much. Any questions for the hockey team? Councilmember Supple?
It's not really a question, it's more of a comment. So welcome and we're very excited about this. I'm really looking forward to watching you play.
Yeah, no, it should be exciting. Looking, hopefully we can bring the Isabel Cup to Richfield. And, you know, and that's the equivalent to the women's Stanley Cup. And the Isabel Cup is the daughter of Stanley Cup.
Wow. Other comments, councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, mayor. And I want to extend welcome also and just ask, when does the season start? And can we buy season tickets? And where, if people wanted to buy season tickets? Could they buy season tickets?
We can, we're figuring out our ticket platform right now. I have my manager's sponsorship tickets here, Carrie. She's here today with us as well. The main focus was trying to find the facility before we can publish the season tickets, you know, for sale. I just got a revision last night of the season six schedule and we're just making sure we can play all our games, you know, in the facility at those dates that we can. We have our website and, you know, Minnesota Whitecaps. And we have an online store, you can buy apparel, you can buy season tickets. Season will start November 4th or 5th weekend, whatever that first Friday, Saturday is. I know we open up on the road for the first week and then home the second week of the season. And then the season normally is over the first week in April.
Well, that's fantastic. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to connect with our Chamber of Commerce or visit Richfield, but there may be an opportunity to really promote a home opener here. And we'd love to make that a great event and our, I would love to see it be a great event and become an annual tradition.
Yep, nope, and sell out would be great. Because apparently it'll be the defending champs will be coming to town that second week.
They're going down.
Yep, be good to knock them off the, knock them off the podium.
I just wanted to also welcome you all to Richfield. We are super lucky to have you and I may be biased, but I feel like you're also very lucky to be here in Richfield. We have an avid, long history of having great people come from our community who are hockey, you know, people who are really well-known in the NFL and we've got great hockey teams. And our community is very interested and excited about hockey. We have a great local fan base and supporters for hockey. And we have folks like Meredith Davis, who is leading the hockey niñas, who I've got to connect with, who are also amazing, powerful women, trailblazing in the hockey space in the same, in the same rink as you all. And then all the great updates that we have to our arena and then Chris's leadership and our staff have just been so great in re-envisioning and revitalizing that space for the future of our community. So I think you're coming in at a really great time. And then personally, I started trailblazing as a very young girl and one of the ways was being the only Latina and the only girl playing hockey with all the boys when I was a little kid. And it was totally fine when I was twice the size of all the boys. But then when I got into high school and they got way bigger than me and were really irritated that I was the only girl on their team and I was cramping their style, it wasn't so fun anymore. So I tried to start my own regional hockey team with the girls in my high school and all the different high schools and we could not get enough girls to say yes. So then I joined a women's league during high school and I think our ice time was on Friday nights at like 10 o'clock at night and Saturday nights. So that tells you the priority that we had in our community. But I haven't played for 17 years, I used to be a left wing. But I just also admire and I'm so happy to see women thriving in playing hockey because I did not have that fun of a time being the only one. And it's nice to see women in that sport. So welcome and we're really excited to support you.
Well, thank you. And at this time, I'd like to extend an offer to you, an invitation to the opening ceremony called drop for opening night and all that.
Thank you. Well, I don't know if we can connect through staff or how via email to see when that date is and.
Yep.
Great, excellent.
We will do that.
Thank you so much, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I move the consent calendar.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments on the consent calendar? No, all right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you, the consent calendar is approved. And the next item is the city manager's report.
Thank you, mayor. I don't have anything to report tonight, but we just met on a staff proposal to spend the remaining approximately $2.6 million in American Rescue Plan funding and wanted to continue the conversation with you all. Here, so I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, city manager Rodriguez. So I'll open it up for conversation to continue conversations on the ARPA allocation and funding. Any comments or questions that council members have? Councilmember Whelan?
Thank you, mayor. And thank you, full council, for being open to some more discussion. I was the one who had requested that. I'll say that I'm, I'm really excited about, I think frankly, all of it. My, my questions are more about how, if this is the best source to fund certain things and then are there, are there things missing that we will not have other opportunities to do? And so I think, I think my biggest sort of question slash more tangible suggestion that I'm curious where the rest of the council's at is would, would we be open to, would we want to consider utilizing a portion of the $450,000 proposed for Emerald Ash Bore removal assistance to, to consider? And I, I think rather than deciding ourselves what a specific project would be, that it would probably go back to staff to see if there is an opportunity there that is appropriate. But towards something that is directly focused on like energy usage, reducing fossil fuel usage in our city, having a sustainability measure that is not, not just damage control, which is needed around ash removal, but is actively moving us forward into the future we know we need in the next decade or so. And so there's a couple other questions I wanted to discuss, but that's, I think, the main one I'd be curious council's thoughts on.
Thank you for that question. Thoughts on using that money for Emerald Ash Bore grants to remove trees in our neighbors' yards too? Something that would be more focused on reducing our carbon footprint and sustainability? Councilmember Supple?
So, before I address that, I do say, would like to say that I thought there was a good variety and balance among what was proposed for the ARPA projects and so I appreciate that. My question is, right now, we know that there is a, a need for the Emerald Ash Bore removal to help people out with that. Do we have an idea of what the needs would be? Or are you proposing that staff look at then what those needs would be? I'm, I'm just trying to figure out if we can make it by the timelines because I think it's a good idea. I just don't know if we can make it for the timelines of the ARPA funding and so that would be what I would ask staff to comment on.
Community director, uh, community director, I'm sorry, recreation director, Markle.
Yeah, thank you, mayor and council. In meeting with sustainability specialist Lindholm, you know, early on as we started compiling ARPA projects, so much of her time right now is focused on organized collection and what other time she has right now is really been focused on Emerald Ash Bore and kind of supporting some of the work done in public works, primarily answering emails about tree planting, what should come in after a tree's cut and doing more of the education component. I asked her, you know, specifically what kind of projects we could do. I think Emerald Ash Bore feels so immediate and so big and there's one staff kind of designated towards tree policy and education. There's not a project that we identified that, that we wanted to contribute. I think the time that, that she has, she feels like this is where it should be. And that's preserving and the tree canopy, which is part of the climate action plan and also the replanting and trying to regrow the tree canopy, which would help mitigate some of the effects of climate change. You know, I do know it is a concern, we don't have a designated sustainability budget, but I do feel like the $450,000 will, will stretch it and make it go far, but it is, it's just a drop in the bucket as Director Asher noted in our work session of the total amount that would need, be needed to cut the trees and that doesn't even include replanting the trees and that can get very expensive. But I think a lot of her time though will be focused on the education and then also developing a significant tree policy, which should include like heritage tree component as well and that's something she's working on with the Sustainability Commission. For foreseeable future, a lot of the focus will be tree.
Thank you, Director Asher. I think councilmember Troutman, you had to comment?
No, thank you. I just appreciate councilmember Whelan just raising the concern. I think it's, I personally very well taken and in advocating that we have an opportunity to discuss it. I think it's appropriate and good. And I, I, I think I'm, I'm curious, but I also don't know, I don't know what we're, we're comparing and so I defer to, to staff on that, you know, in terms of what, what kind of opportunities there could be and what the cost benefit is. You know, I think, I think I'd be very curious to know what that is. And, and so I don't have a strong opinion now because it's, there's nothing, I, there's nothing I conceptually have that could, I could balance the two. But I just, I appreciate you raising the concern and would support understanding a couple different options if that was possible.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
I think my, it's hard, yeah, it's hard to know when we don't know what we're comparing against and I understand why councilor Whelan doesn't want to come up with the ideas because it is like staff's role to do it, but it's a little hard to picture. But of the categories that I think of in the ways that we impact sustainability, I feel like for the most part, it should be and it is through policy. The biggest changes we can have are things like organized collection or discouraging driving or parking and promoting alternatives that reduce our impact. The one category that occurs to me that we can't really address their policy that maybe we could address with something like this is related to like building energy use since we can't regulate building code. So it does seem possible that you might have grant funding to, you know, convert to heat pumps or education or energy audits or something like that. I would say my only concern with that, because I do think it's really important, my only concern with that is that it seems like it's likely that the benefits of that would go to high-income households, whereas this will almost, when we're comparing it to Emerald Ash Bore, will by design go to low-income households. So I, I, I don't know. I, I'm also just curious, why did you, why did you pick that funding versus like the splash pad you'd asked about in the work session?
Yeah, and I appreciate the questions. I, I don't think that that is the only funding we could reconsider. I mean, there's other things. I, I think my main question on the splash pad is not whether it should happen, but if, if we do end up going to, for example, like a referendum, I, my conventional knowledge from having worked at churches is if you're going to do a capital plant, capital campaign, you want to roll in a bunch of things that different people will get excited about and that are really obvious, that went through an experience where we, we got funding to fix one thing and then that, that, that created a sense of complacency of the other things were fine. I couldn't, like, we can't see them as easily. So I, I think my not fully formed thought there is, would, would that money, which we absolutely need for recreation infrastructure, be best elsewhere? And what I'm hearing from staff there is a sense that, no, they think that is the best use and so I'm willing to trust that. But I, I do, I guess coming back to the sustainability piece, I, I feel very strongly that we, we don't yet have the plan or the capacity or the budget for what we're actually going to need to do. And so I, I appreciate the, the perspective too of like what our current staff have capacity for in the foreseeable future. But I was, I was just pulling up the, the climate action plan, I think, building efficiency and frankly, we're not going to be able to do this just at the city level. It will require state and federal and county level as well, but we, as a world, need to retrofit literally every single building everywhere in the next 10 to 15 years to be run on clean electricity and like more efficient. That we, I mean, we, we can create policies about electric vehicle charging stations, but we also will just likely need to invest money in more people building them. That people, I agree, the systems that have existed for getting heat pumps or solar energy have been pretty inaccessible to folks at lower incomes, but again, is going to need to be how we operate as a society. Like I, I don't think any level of government has fully comprehended how much change we will need to do and fund. And so to do nothing in that direction when we have more funding, more flexibility than we're likely going to have in the next 10 years, foreseeably, feels like a big miss. And so I, I don't disagree with what we're already doing. I don't disagree that absolutely folks with low incomes are going to need assistance with their ash trees. But it just, if, if summers are consistently over 100 degrees in a decade, what, how much does the other stuff matter, I guess? So I, yeah, I'll get off my soapbox, but just feel really strongly that whether, whether this is the moment or not, we can't keep operating in a, in the direction we're going.
So I have, I have a question and I know that you're on the Sustainability Commission as well. And so as you connect what you're, what you just said to the work of the Climate Action Plan and the Sustainability Commission, is part of what's next to get more granular in, in focusing on what that plan looks like? Is that already in the Climate Action Plan? Kind of what's the gap that you're seeing that needs to be filled?
But to me, it, it is almost entirely funding. I mean, staff capacity is a funding question. How many grant programs can we offer in retrofitting or matching grant programs is a funding question. I, I think primarily the, the issue is that we, as a society, despite decades of being told the same things, have not invested at the level we need to. And so that's why this feels like the moment to do something about it is that I, I guess if, if our 10-year financial plan that we were just discussing, the, the general budget too, had taken seriously, like how do we, and frankly, I don't think it's hiring more like a second sustainability person. I think it is figuring out how to embed sustainability in all our departments. And then similar to the conversation we're having around equity, how do we give that an actual budget? I, yeah, so I, I think that's the, the questions that, at least so far, I have not, I, I will admit, I am one of five. I have not heard that being a priority from the rest of council. I've not heard resistance, but I've not heard the active pushing for taking climate change seriously to be, I feel like when we had the strategic planning process, I pushed for it to be one of our top five and it became a subpoint under one of the five. And so I, I'm, I may just be outvoted on that, but I, I don't think we are doing enough. I don't think we have the plan in place that will actually get us where we need to go. And so I may just be outvoted on that, but I don't think we are doing enough. I don't think we have the plan in place that will actually get us where we need to go.
City Manager Rodriguez?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond briefly and thank you for giving some more details to it. I appreciate, one of the things I was going to ask is just did you have some ideas from the Climate Action Plan that was an alternative? So I appreciate the talk about building efficiency. But when you talk about a future capital campaign and a referendum, I do think that makes sense with a property tax, if it were a property tax referendum. But before the sales tax, the local option sales tax, and again, we haven't even had a work session to talk about the details of it. But my understanding is those projects are voted on independently.
Other comments from council members?
I think I will just make, it's not like a comprehensive response to some of the comments you just said, but in terms of making it a priority, I think we still have a lot of work to do to continue to build our internal infrastructure as an organization to meet the needs of today and tomorrow. And I think equity is a big part of that. I don't see that as separate from climate and climate action. And I know we have not been talking about it, but I think that those, the building of that infrastructure and approaches, I mean, I would be interested in exploring that as a part of our equity work. And we haven't had those conversations, but for me, I feel like I really want to make sure that we spend the adequate time and budget necessary to build our internal capacities to respond to volatility today and tomorrow. And I don't think we're there yet. And so I, I'm not, I still want to continue to focus that, but I think that climate action and sustainability is key in that, just like equity. We should be implementing that across everything in our, that we do as a city. Because these are the things that we have to take into account and respond to, and we're already doing it. And if we're not taking equity and sustainability into account, I just, I feel like that's not setting us up for success. So that's how I think of it. We haven't had that conversation, I think. But I think those two things are very much linked and the types of infrastructure and capacity we need built for equity in some ways is similar or related to what we might need for sustainability possibly. I don't know. That's just some initial thinking from my end.
Other, yes, Director?
Yeah, I just want to say I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Wayland, on climate change. And as we work towards approving our strategic plan as a city, I do want to note, we do have several strategic initiatives that really bring back some focus to the Climate Action Plan. I know a lot of our time with sustainability specialists, Lindholm, myself, has been organized collection in the past year. And we do want to go back to the Climate Action Plan and really start working on the initiatives. So one of them is to do more internal and external education, just to make sure our staff and our community has the opportunity to access the document, ask questions, engage with it, understand it. So we are looking at different engagement opportunities in the coming year. For instance, tabling at the farmer's market and being there and being able to answer questions, things like that. Another one is also just looking at the Climate Action Plan and addressing some of the items on it and prioritizing them. And what's, in our staff capacity and funding capacity, what can we do in the short term, medium term, long term? And you really start identifying funding sources and partners for some of it. You know, I feel like the Climate Action Plan came right before Organized Collection and it's a great document to guide the work in the future, but now that we have Organized Collection kind of, you know, settled and we're working on it continuously, but now that it's implemented, I do feel like we'll be able to circle back with the Climate Action Plan and really do more of the work and focus.
Other comments from council? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would just say, you know, to the extent you haven't heard from all of us, I just want to be clear that that climate change not only is real, but is eminent in impacting us. And I know I've heard Director Markle talk about changes, strategic changes she's having to make as she manages our park resources. And it is a part of our strategic plan. And I appreciate that you're correlating our funding and our strategic plan and both were responsible for both. And so I just want to be clear that that's, I want to simultaneously be clear that that I affirm that reality. I also want to be clear that neither staff nor myself have a clear vision at the moment. And so I appreciate having the space, but I don't, I don't have anything particularly concrete to say in the moment, except to the extent that staff needs needs direction about our priorities that hasn't been expressed explicitly. I think it's a good opportunity to do so. So thanks for raising that opportunity for us.
Other comments or discussion? I know there might be other items that folks want to talk about as it relates to ARPA allocations as well. If there's other items too.
Do we feel we reached a resolution on Councilmember Wayland's request? I don't feel like we did.
No, I don't think so.
And my only thought would be Director Asher did say sort of $300,000 was the functional minimum for that. Would we want to ask staff? If you had to spend $150,000 on climate change in some way, what would you do? And come back to us with a proposal to either do that or just keep it all in EAB? I don't know if that's an impossible task for staff to just imagine what you would do with it's a fairly small amount of money, but that seems like one way to at least slightly dip our toes into doing something here. I would think of like possible outcomes might be education for homeowners or a particular retrofit to a city building that would reduce climate impacts of that facility or anything like that in my mind, but it was Councilmember Wayland's idea priority.
I guess what I'm hearing is certainly from staff, I think from some of my council colleagues too, is that digging more into the Climate Action Plan, because I don't know if I said this explicitly, I think what we have in the action plan is really good, but we're already behind on the timeline, not without reason. Because we, our responsibility is to provide the funding and staffing to actually reach the goals and outcomes that we set. And we haven't done that. The staffing and budget that we provided did organized hauling and that's great and that's needed. But I think, anyway, what I think I'm hearing is that we have not been clear of the Climate Action Plan, what comes next, what we would like the outcomes of that to look like. That I, I think in addition to like some programs for retrofitting buildings, some programs for, I mean, there's transportation things, not just vehicle charging, like there's there's programs to get people, solar panels, there's plenty of education to be done about the programs that already exist. But what I'm, what I think I'm hearing is that it would feel a little arbitrary to just pick that, that we haven't had a conversation. And I guess I, we're not suddenly going to have $2.6 million more in future budgets. I would hope that we could have $150,000 more. That that level, if that's the level we could play with, that again, absolutely would get used for the purpose it's already proposed for. But if that's the level, I'd be open to a conversation about getting clearer on our priorities and what funding and staff capacity it would take to do that in years to come. But then knowing that we are going to have to actually create a budget if we're not pulling money from this moment.
City Manager Rodriguez?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to summarize to what I've heard so far. I think that you're asking staff to look at taking $150,000 from the EAB proposal and to look at, could we do something in the Climate Action Plan for $150,000? Is that correct? And bring that back.
I know that was suggested by one council member. Are others interested in that? I would only be interested if it's a meaningful thing to do and that could be shared to us. But if it's not and it's more conversation that's needed to to better plan that out, I would be fine not moving forward with a $150,000 project, depending on what it is and the outcome, I guess, on my end.
Councilmember Supple?
From what I was hearing from Councilmember Wayland, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we could look at that, but that's something that we could also do in a future budget, but we need to say that, hey, this is a priority. Is that what you're saying? You don't want to forget about it even if we don't get to it now?
I guess I, my interpretation from what I'm hearing from staff is that they've already had this conversation and came back with a proposal for, that the conversation was had about are there other proposals worth putting in for the ARPA money? And that the answer was no, and that given where we're at right now, what they're working on, that EAB was the proposal. And so I, what I'm hearing is a lot of uncertainty. I've, I guess I feel if we as council wanted to ask for something else, that would be our decision. And having not heard the certainty that like that should happen or what that should be, I guess I'm hesitant to just expect staff to come up with something if they've already said, no, we feel this is the thing worth doing.
I agree. And I think the question was, are there other things? And the response from staff was, we did have that conversation, like you said, and the response was that, no, we didn't find something. So then that sounds like, that's the way I'm understanding it. We have a future conversation as a council. Okay. Other comments, questions from council? And then from staff, Director Markle?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, if it helps, I can definitely have further conversations with our director team, a sustainability specialist, Lindholm, and look at the Climate Action Plan and see if there is something that bubbles up that would fit that $150,000 budget and just kind of weigh the pros and cons with the $450,000 that would be for EAB versus $300,000. And we can have that conversation and get that to with more information if that helps guide that decision.
Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to thank staff and council for engaging in this conversation. And I just want to be clear, since you're looking for clarity, I trust our staff both to be responsive to our policy concerns and in your individual competency. And so to the extent that you come back and you say, we've identified something, that's great. That I, what I don't want is staff to feel like they're obligated to do something performative. That's a, well, council wants an environmental merit badge, let's get them one. And I don't, and I don't think that's what, that's not what my councilmember Wayland is suggesting either. So to the extent that he brought something to mind that is in line with our values and our strategic plan, that I I thought this was a good catch. If staff feels the same way and there's an opportunity to do that, that's great. But if staff looks at it and says, that's a good catch and we'll think about that in the next budget, I'm don't, no merit badges, just vision and good policy is what we're looking for. Or what I'm looking for, I assume the same.
Councilmember Wayland?
Yeah, I would echo that. And also, I, $150,000 is not a magic number. If we look at this and decide like, okay, we we have been thinking so far of like what is in our capacity to do? And if we want to change the question to like, how do we build the capacity to do what we need to? If that, I mean, we have other items on the proposals that are are setting us up for something that are not the final project, like the staffing study. If there is something with a much smaller price tag that would be helpful in setting up a future conversation, or, I mean, best case scenario, if we need to have a future conversation and it's free and we have the expertise to do that, then that is also a step forward. I guess I'm just acknowledging, want to make sure we have asked the question because, as I said, funding is so often the barrier, but if it's not the barrier or a smaller amount of funding is, yeah.
Councilmember Supple, did you have something? No? Okay. Does that, are folks fine with this conversation? Are there other items? Do we feel, I feel like you've summarized it pretty well, Councilmember Wayland, with your last comment.
I'm still not clear what they asked of staff is right now.
So my understanding is that they're going to go back and look at the Climate Action Plan to see if there might be something. There may or may not be something. And that there is a message from the council to say this is something that we want to further get more clarity on as a council with staff to continue to be working on this more more deeply and to be resourcing it as needed.
And just that that is climate action or?
That is climate, yeah, that is the Climate Action Plan.
That sounds good to me.
Correct, Councilmember Wayland? Okay.
All right. So I think, any other conversations around the ARPA funding?
No? Go ahead, Councilmember Wayland.
Just very briefly to anyone who's listening, and we have been very zoomed in on one thing, would encourage folks to take a look at the the full proposals. I think overall it is extremely exciting. Some badly needed software updates, an additional social worker and CSO to help with the aspects of public safety that are not just for police officers to respond to, splash pads, some social service funding, and a couple of other things I'm forgetting. But there's much more than just what we talked about now. Would encourage folks to check it out. It is very exciting overall.
Absolutely. And a huge thank you to our staff for putting these proposals together and thinking of such a diversity and variety of things that are immediate and short term and also really investing in the long-term success of our community. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Just because we didn't get to talk about it in the work session, I just wanted to say how excited I am about that mural at Galaxy Foods and our support of it. I think of sort of the, you know, attitudes over decades that Richfield has had towards different parts of town and how we think about things and how we think about redevelopment. And I think there is a point in Richfield in which our dream for that whole site would have been to like level and build townhomes. So the fact that we are now like embracing that as a really positive part of our community is like really great to see. Whenever I walk past that area, it's just like such a unique part of town. It's such a great area. I'm glad we're helping to support this sort of community-driven initiative there. So I'm really glad that made the list.
Totally, absolutely. Other comments? Okay, well, I think that moves us to the next item. And I think I closed my packet. So one second here. Okay, so that concludes, is that everything for the City Managers Report? Thank you for that time and space to be talking about such an important item. And thank you, Councilmember Wayland, for bringing it to our council meeting to continue discussing. The next item is claims and payroll.
Supple, I would move approval of claims and payroll.
Second?
Claims and payroll, the motion has been made and seconded. Comments on claims and payroll? Okay, all?
Thank you, staff.
Thank you, staff. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Claims and payroll has been approved. Hats off to Hometown Hits. Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick reminder that early voting is already open and has been for a while in the primary. In addition to voting within your political party to select candidates for certain races, there's also some key races this year that are nonpartisan, including the at-large seat for Richfield City Council and our county attorney's seat that have more candidates than can go to the general ballot. And so would encourage folks to do their research. You can come early vote here at City Hall for anyone in Richfield. The August 9th is the last day to vote when you can go in person to your typical polling place. And I don't know if city staff want to add anything on the times for early voting or like how soon we start having weekends you can come in?
Thanks, Councilmember Wayland. I certainly can. This microphone is a little janky. Sorry. So the City Hall will be open on August 6th from 10:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m. for absentee in-person voting. Starting on August 2nd, you will actually be able to feed your ballot into a ballot counter here in council chambers. That is what's called direct balloting. And then also, I also wanted to share that tomorrow is the public accuracy test. And then also, I also wanted to share that tomorrow is the public accuracy test. Previous years, this has kind of been shoved a little underneath, but I want as many people to be involved as possible. I have opened up an invitation to election judges to show up, just because they are mostly Richfield residents as well. So that will be here tomorrow at the, in here at Richfield City Hall, in the Heredia Room, of which I will put to the test three of our ballot counters, just to make sure that they are accurate. So you can come on by, and you're more than welcome to join.
Thank you. Councilmember Supple?
Thank you. One of the things I wanted to talk about was a thank you to public works staff. Couple of weeks ago, we got a call that there was water bubbling up on one of the city's streets, and it was a Friday night, so, you know, the normal offices were closed. And so I asked, what's the procedure if somebody needs to report something? And if it's something that's not an emergency, like your street light burnt out, you can go onto the city website, and there's a form to fill out for non-emergency things, but if you see water bubbling up in the street and there's a leak going on, the suggestion was made that you call the non-emergency number for the police department, and then they will contact the on-call public works people. And so what happened on that Friday night is they went out and tried to shut down some of the water flow so it would do less damage until it could be fixed on Monday, because it's real hard to be doing some of that stuff at Friday night in the dark. But they assessed the situation and decided what needed to happen, and so you call the non-emergency number, and they will patch it through to the on-call public works people. So thank you for everybody that helped that, and I was in that neighborhood just recently, and everything's all patched up, and the water leak was dealt with in a timely manner. And thank you also to the community members that were calling and reporting that. The other thing I want to talk about is a big thank you to all of the people that worked together to do a basketball tournament at Donaldson Park called Hoops Local. So we had BJ Scoog, who's part of the Richfield Leadership Network, Carl Scales, who is like the, does a lot of coaching and helped with organizing the tournament, and also Richfield Recreation Staff, we win, helped with that. So thank you to everybody that participated, and all the groups that worked together to put that on, and we're hoping that this was the first annual, and it'll continue on into the future. And then lastly, the Unity and Community Celebration is coming up on August 5th, and it's going to be at Veterans Park from 4:00 to 7:00. And a lot of people worked really hard. For a while, there was a question of whether they could be, there would be backpacks or school supplies available, and everybody rallied together, and there are going to be backpacks and school supplies. So spread the word, and it's August 5th at Veterans Park from 4:00 to 7:00. And it's over by where the farmer's market usually is held. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Wanted to say today, I got to participate in the Safe Rights to School Workshop at Richfield Dual Language and STEM School. Cool workshop led with our city staff, the school, and MINDOT, and consultants, so looking at two intersections around those schools. It was kind of cool, like brainstorming, and you've got both engineers and just residents coming up with ideas on how to make those safer. So I'm looking forward to sort of seeing some of their suggestions. There'll be like a six months or one year, like, temporary pilot project to try improvements, and it should be pretty cool. And needed safety improvements, because I know there's been a lot of complaints and concerns around those schools. Other thing is the Urban Wildland 5K and Half Marathon this Saturday. You can say more about it, but I was just mentioning it because I'm going to lead the 5K course on my bike, so if you can, yeah, beat me on my bike on foot, then I'll be really embarrassed, so go for it.
Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was also going to mention that we have our half marathon, which is a great opportunity to raise support and funding for Wood Lake Nature Center, but also just a great opportunity to be out in community, and I think we still need volunteers, too. So if you want to participate and come and cheer folks on, you're welcome. If you want to get involved, great things happen when we do great things as a community. And so, Director Markle, do you know who people could reach out to if they wanted to volunteer? They should contact Scott Ramsey at Wood Lake Nature Center. How would they do that? You could email, you could call our city, call the number on our city website, or is there a better number? Wood Lake Nature Center, wonderful. And also lifting up early voting, just as a bit of friendly rivalry and encouragement. We have some of the highest voter turnout rates in the country, and Richfield has incredibly high voter turnout rates, and Ward 1 is usually the board that has the highest voter turnout. And so I encourage everybody to vote, everybody, but we have a reputation to uphold Ward 1 in coming out and participating in democracy, and so it's an incredible privilege. Go Minnesota, go Richfield, and just on this occasion, go Ward 1.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. The last thing I'll share are, there are so many cool things happening outdoors at the band show or outdoor events, as you can hear from the updates people are sharing this summer, but in addition to everything that's being shared, we're having a live at the Lindell Gardens Theater Series with the Illusion Theater at the Richfield Lake Amphitheater. And the performances are on Wednesday nights, starting August 3rd through August 31st, usually at 7:00 p.m. And so there's going to be music and stories to lighten your heart with the folks that will be presenting on the 3rd. There looks like there's some music, the August 10th, Exploring Marvin Gaye's albums, a women's choir group, Malamania, 60s music as well on one of the nights. So 6400 Lindell Avenue South, Wednesdays in August. They are free and great opportunity to take your family to experience some art right in our own backyard. So thank you, everyone. I don't, oh, oh, 19, wait, did you, oh, no, you said National, okay. National Night Out is August 2nd. Yes, thank you so much, Councilmember Wayland. So that is our city and communities and national block party that everybody has. So National Night Out, you can call the city or go on our website to find more information, but usually block captains host them, or you can just walk around your neighborhood and go eat some free food and get to know your neighbors if there's a block party nearby. So August 2nd is National Night Out. All right, thank you, everyone, and I will adjourn our meeting.